Why don't we go ahead and get started? So, what we have before us, and I think staff has done a great job sort of laying out what the remaining issues are that we need to talk about. So, sort of broken into several pieces that are laid out. And the first one is the FY14 operating budget. And the items to resolve, I'm just going to quickly go through these, are agreeing on a budget scenario, what we do with funding for the cable TV, and use charge that will be contained in general gov.
Please, I will.
So, those are some of the bigger policy issues. And then, we can talk about stormwater, and then so on and so forth down the list. So, with the first item, the FY14 operating budget, what I'd like to do is allow Council Member Duncan, who provided a somewhat new scenario or refined what we were talking about at the last meeting, an opportunity to kind of walk us through what his thoughts are and how he's getting to where he's getting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And first, I want to thank Mr. LeConde, Mr. Shields, for the time that they've spent with me in the last few days and helping me try to translate what I'm trying to get at into information that hopefully will be understandable and assessable and comparable to the other things that we're considering. And I, of course, would defer to them on the technical details of anything that I'm presenting here. And the mayor's right, this is an evolution, I suppose, of some of the things that we've been discussing. So, without taking too much time, I sent some information out to you all by email. You may not have had a chance to look at it. But what I was trying to get at was really to look at the budget from the other side. I'm trying to ask if we charge the average taxpayer another 50 bucks a month, what kind of revenues would we generate, and how would we deploy them? So, what you have before you is a scenario that provides for a budget that funds the legitimate justified asks we've received from the schools and general government. I'm bashful about using the phrase "fully funded" because I'm not sure any entity is ever fully funded, but that's certainly, I think, the intent of this on the schools and city side. It creates the new stormwater utility we've talked about with a $650,000 seed startup amount from surplus, just as has been called for, to be repaid by a fee collection in June 2014, as has been called for. I'm obviously open to any suggestions about how we can trim that number down while still making sure that we have adequate staff to plan the enterprise that we are embarking upon and to begin to execute its early stages. One note about that, maybe we'll talk about this more under stormwater, but my pitch would be to establish the credit program in advance of a collection of the fee so that we could actually credit any best management practices before we collected money from anyone. If that's feasible, that would be my preference. This plan holds 17% of total revenues in three designated funds. An unassigned fund balance, trying to call these very specific things, as I said the other night, I think it's important if we're going to save money to explain to taxpayers why we're saving it. An unassigned fund balance, two, a capital savings account, and three, a taxpayer and revenue stabilization fund. They're fairly self-explanatory, obviously, capital savings is to build schools and municipal buildings, stormwater infrastructure, and other hard things that take a while to work on. Unassigned fund balance is unassigned. And the taxpayer and revenue stabilization fund is a fund that would come to the rescue when either the city or the taxpayers incur some special and unusual difficulty. The proposal that I put forth carries a tax rate, best I can estimate, of about 127.5. I've asked the CFO, and he did, to show on the spreadsheet that you have before you that going below 1.275 would require eliminating pay raises for city staff, which I do not support. Eliminating those raises would bring the tax rate down to 126. I asked Mr. LeConde to do that because we are hearing, I think, a fair number of voices in the community saying that because some of our citizens are retirees on fixed incomes or have not seen much in the way of pay increases for several years, and now are threatened by sequester, furloughs, et cetera, this may not be the best time to be raising the pay of our city and schools employees. I fully understand and appreciate those anxieties, which is why I'm trying really hard to hold the tax rate as close as possible to the current 127 while meeting the, you know, urgent and pressing needs of the school system and maintaining excellence in city services. My plan calls for stocking the taxpayer and revenue stabilization fund with approximately 1.5 million, drawing down half that sum at the start of FY1314 to enable the 127.5 tax rate, and committing to replenish that drawdown from FY1314 surplus with the stabilization fund having a first dollar end claim to any surplus. With this approach, the combined sum held in the city's three designated funds remains at 17% of revenue, at the top of the 12% to 17% range in council's fund balance policy. It also has the advantage, I hope, of sparing us, you know, the summer surplus drama that we went through last year. If we enacted this proposal, everyone would know on April 22nd exactly where the first $750,000 of surplus was going. It would go into the replenishment of the revenue stabilization fund. I think I'll probably stop there. Obviously, I'm happy to answer any questions, but Mr. LeConde is the expert on the specifics. Just to end where I began, this would, for the average homeowner, entail a approximately $50 or $600 a year increase in what they pay to the city government in fees and taxes over last year. You know, that's a lot of money, but I think it's an amount of money that I, at least, am willing to ask for because of the needs that have been demonstrated and because I do think if we use this approach, we'd be able to specify exactly where we are spending every penny. And, you know, any consideration that there were slush funds or unaccounted-for surplus or whatever would be extinguished because we really would be running, you know, the leanest possible operation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan. Any questions by council members? Ron?
I guess I'd like to hear from Mr. LeConde how this fits in with the fiscal policies the council's adopting. And the reason I ask that is, there's a reason you set fiscal policies sort of in a vacuum of the actual budgeting. You don't make policy decisions in the heat of battle because frankly, things get lost and prudent decisions are not made. So, you step back, and I know we spent a lot of time, at least in the couple of years I've been here, coming up with fiscal policies about why we have certain reserves and certain things at certain levels and so on. And, good or bad, we can debate that, but now is not the time to debate that while you're in the middle of trying to scramble to change things for funding. I know that's kind of an intellectual concept, but I think that's the purpose of the policy, to guide those decisions so that you make long-term decisions that are consistent with a long-term view of where the money and where the budget are going. And so, I guess I'd like to hear analysis of this, of how it fits in with those long-term fiscal policies that we spent an awful lot of time and community input, and we had commissions and mords and things weigh in on.
If I could, I know Mr. LeConde was addressed, and certainly he'll be more expert than I am, but my response to that would be that I'm actually following, as I read it, our fund balance policy, which calls for, I mean, I'm improving it a little bit, I suppose, because I'm specifying, you know, for what we are going to use the money that we're saving. But, you know, our fund balance policy calls for 12%, 17% and contemplates that there would be situations where it was drawn down, and there is language about how it would be replenished. And by my lights, replenishing it within the same year it's incurred is more ambitious than the policy itself calls for. That's how I think I can justify asking to do this because, as Mr. Pepe suggests, it's, you know, it's a little unusual. It's not, like, radical or crazy. It is, I would argue, within the policy.
If I can just ask council members if we can just, if there's a question that's posed to staff, if we can have staff answer it, and certainly I'll open it up for council members to provide their views in supplement. But for questions directed at particular staff members or other council members, if we can try to keep the order going and keep the flow going. So, Mr. LeConde, if you care to answer that.
Okay. Again, the policy that we established, particularly for the unassigned, was two months of revenue or expenditures. Did not contemplate revenue or tax stabilization fund. That, to me, and the intent was to perhaps do that later on, but the major item was just to put us on solid ground in terms of our unassigned reserves. On the other hand, the capital reserve was specifically based on a 40-year useful life, and it would require a minimum of 2.5% a year to build it up. If you recall, when we talked about the capital reserve, I said I looked at our assets, and I divided them approximately by 40 years, and that's the max or the minimum amount that would be needed to set aside money so that you could replace those assets as we move forward and as the assets themselves had used up their useful lives. So, if you were going to do something like this, it would require that you reestablish a new policy. Now, the 17%, again, my basis was two months of expenditures. It was what we felt was best practice. GFOA has also come out and said that. But it is flexible. We did say that when it got down to 12 that we needed to take action to begin building it up. It allowed for some period of time to build up because if, in fact, you have to use your fund balance, there is no guarantee that you could restore it in a year without severe cuts. This was done to smooth out the process to build your fund balance back up again.
Well, if I could follow up, I guess one of my concerns, and again, I just saw this this evening, so I'm just trying to figure out what's going on. You know, A, I've got the policy concern, B, one of the reasons you have a balance and you have it set a year ahead of time essentially, as well as in your budgeted revenues you basically know you're going to get, and you don't count on making it up out of a surplus, is you never know if you're going to have a surplus. And so, it just doesn't strike me as responsible budgeting to count on things like that. I mean, I think Phil, you did a great attempt here to try and pull this together, and I have a lot of respect for you, but I have visions of these folks who stand in front of the Capitol and stand there every year and say, "We solved all the problems." And what they've done is kicked it down the road a year, and then it turns out to be even worse the following year. And I really would just want to make sure, whatever we do, we avoid that scenario. So, that's why I'm asking.
And as you've seen with, unfortunately, all the forecasts they've given you, they've always produced deficits because we are just not in an economic environment where we can assume that we're going to have that growth that generates surpluses. We've generated surpluses partly because of good fortune with the economy, but also because we've made sure that we've underspent our budgets as opposed to overspent. So, that's why you have what you have today.
Wyatt, did you have any comments?
If I could just make one additional note, there's, I think the key policy to keep in mind is not using one-time money for your operating budget. If council will recall, back in January, we talked, we had a very simple chart that showed if the general, you know, we forecasted revenues would grow, I think at that point we said 3.8%, and the general government grew at that level. And then, the superintendent had presented a budget at that time, and that chart showed that we would need a 10-cent increase in the tax rate. And if we're going to fund the cable TV and the rent for the use of facilities, we're basically right back where we were with that chart. And so, the reason we don't have a 10-cent increase in the budget is because we have moved stormwater out, so that's one penny. And then, we reduced the fund balance restoration by 3 cents. So, a total of 4 cents came out, and that's why the budget that is before you requires a 6-cent tax rate increase. In any permutation, if you want to lower the tax rate, you need to cut the budget. There's a lot of discussion about using surplus and things like that. No matter when it happens, if you use the surplus for that purpose, you've got a budget that's built on a $1.33 rate, but you don't have a $1.33 tax rate, and that will end badly. And so, we will steadfastly recommend that if you wish to lower the rate, we need to cut the budget itself and not use the one-time surplus money to do so. Now, we have identified the capital items in the budget that are paid for out of the tax rate. So, those have been on the table, and those are on the table for the scenario 2 and the scenario 2B that are before the council.
Okay. Any other comments by council members?
Nope.
So, just so, so to clarify, it's staff's recommendation that we not go down the road that's been presented by council member Duncan at this point.
Right.
Any solution that uses one-time money to fund the school operating budget, we would provide a very firm recommendation against doing that.
Thank you. All right. I just want to get the council's sense on this, and then we can move on, or if there's council sense that this is where we're headed, then we can open it up for further discussion. Anybody other than Mr. Duncan want to entertain this for Monday? Mr. Tarter?
Well, here's what I would say. First off, let me make a disclosure, the same one I made on Tuesday. After discussions with the city attorney pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3112 and 3115G, I would like to disclose that my wife, Karen Scholes, works for the Falls Church City Public Schools. My wife and I are members of a group of three or more people that may be affected by the reference city and school budgets. And based on my review and discussions with the city attorney, I believe I can participate in the budget discussions and vote fairly objectively and in the public interest. That being said, I first want to thank Mr. Duncan for the efforts that he's put forth. I just got this myself as well late this afternoon, and I have to say I can't, I have not put my arms fully around it, but I certainly appreciate the sentiment. So, I'm not sure what else to say other than that. I just haven't had a chance to really fully understand this, and so, at this point, I'm not sure I have an opinion one way or the other.
Other council members? And again, it's going to take four votes to move a budget forward, so if we can't get at least four that are willing to entertain it, I suggest that we move on. So, why don't we move through the other scenarios and see where folks are at? So, scenario one, which is what the manager recommended, which has a tax rate of 1.33, I think we're folks, and again, if I'm not capturing the essence of it, where that, there didn't seem to be four members that felt that 1.33, as far as the rate goes, should be where we land. So, I just want to confirm that with everybody. Okay. So, I think we can take scenario one off the table.
Let me ask this.
Could I ask?
Mr. Duncan? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Tarter.
So, I mean, Dave Snyder's not here, obviously, and I mean, I guess we have no sense.
He proposed scenario two, so.
And he's not willing to entertain proposal.
We might have asked him.
So, I mean, but I'm not sure why we're taking things off the table necessarily. It may have the support of somebody.
Well, council members can certainly choose to make motions for them on Monday night's meeting, but at the same time, we've got to have a direction of where we're going so staff has something to prepare for Monday.
And haven't they prepared?
And we still need four.
I got you. And I mean, obviously, there's some work to be done to come up with whatever that will be voted on on Monday. I guess I'm just trying to figure out why we're taking things off the table necessarily. For example, scenario one seemed to have some support on Monday or on Tuesday, or whenever we met. I guess we're saying that there was not.
Didn't have four unless.
Well, nothing had four, though, on Monday or Tuesday, did it?
No.
Yeah, I mean, we can't, I mean, we can't wait till Monday.
Well, I hear you. I hear you. I guess what I'm just trying to say, though, is that nothing has four votes at the present time.
Well, that's what we're trying to sort out now. Yeah, and there's no, there's no other way to do it rather than going through each scenario.
I hear you.
And if there's still not four, we can certainly go through each one yet again.
I mean, look, I'll consider one. I'm not taking one off the table. I'll consider one.
Okay.
Why don't we keep kind of a tally there?
Yeah, that's, I'm happy to do that. So, it sounds like at least Mr. Tarter would like option.
I'm not saying like, I just hell-consider. I'm not, I, within the realm of possibilities of voting for it.
Okay. So, that's still, at least, Mr. Tarter's willing to continue to examine scenario one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay.
As I said the other night, I liked scenario one. I thought it was responsible. I'd consider it, but again, that's only two of us, so.
And again, you know, I'm willing to consider it as well, but I don't think that gets us to four.
No.
So, I'm just going to leave Ron and myself on as well for the time being. All right. Why don't we turn to scenario two? I believe that Vice Mayor Snyder supported this version, and my understanding is that he's still supportive of it. And others? Any other further questions, thoughts about scenario two?
Still where I was.
So, Ron is still in supportive of it. I had expressed support of option two as well. Other members?
Jemaine, let's get her on.
Mr. Mayor, we have variations of scenario two.
This was just straight two.
Okay, just straight two, and then we'll get to two A and B and C.
Straight two. Then we'll get to, this, we'll call this two A.
If we get to Z, we'll do Z one and Z two.
All right, Z one and Z two, fine.
But this is just plain two.
This is plain two, okay.
Plain two.
All right.
All right, so that still leaves us with three.
I'll consider two as well.
Mr. Tarter is Catholic in his.
Okay. So, that might, that may get us to four. All right. We are on to scenario 2B, which was a modification of two, which reduced the school operating fund by 344.7 and uses savings to pay for the cable TV use charge and cuts the sustainability coordinator admin position, but maintains the police officer. And then, does everything else that two does. So, how do members feel about that? Ms. Mary?
I would support 2B with regret in that I would like to see the sustainability coordinator and the O composition in there, but if we are going to horse-trade and try to get to four votes, I would support 2B.
Okay. Other, other members? Mr. Cal?
I can support 2B.
Any others?
Only if we can't get to two.
Okay.
Ron's a, Ron's a, how would you put that?
I'd see where we voted on two first.
Okay. And I could also concede that in the realm of possibility. Can I ask a question about that?
Yes.
So, on the police officer, what is the justification for adding the police officer?
Wyatt?
The police officer position, this is a position that was cut in the 2011 budget, and it really relates to shift size. And so, currently, we have, we have the minimum number of officers to be able to fill out a shift. And so, since 2011, we've had one shift that's been a police officer down. So, what we typically do is we either have overtime or we try to, you know, work around our shifts to fill that slot when necessary.
So, could you also tell us what the ratio to police officers to citizens, just even roughly, in Falls Church is versus other communities?
Well, we currently have, if I recall correctly, 32 uniformed officers, and so, this would take us to 33. I'll need to confirm those numbers, but that's off my memory. And so, then, that would be divided by a population of 12,500.
So, what does that come up to, like, one per 400 or something? And how about Fairfax and other jurisdictions? Do you have even the slightest idea?
Well, certainly, we will have a higher ratio than any of the larger jurisdictions. But again, what drives our officer corps is that the size of the shift. And that's a sort of basic accreditation standards and basic safety standards for the operation of a police department.
Are we at risk of losing our accreditation if we don't hire this police officer?
Well, I would need to probably get the chief to answer that question. But what I can say is that the staffing size has been consistent really since the '90s, or perhaps before then, I know at least since the '90s, in order to maintain a basic safety level for shift size.
I mean, I would ask if anyone else has any interest in considering eliminating that position unless it's necessary for accreditation.
Anyone interested in eliminating that position? Mr. Duncan?
My comment, I guess, about the police was broader than that. I'm not sure when's the time to, the most alarming thing, I think, that I learned during the whole budget discussions was that, you know, a substantial portion of the force is on, you know, leave because of something.
Stress.
Stress-related. And I found that shocking, A, because I'd not, never heard it, and B, because I'd really like to understand more about why that is. I mean, I'm sure that everybody, and these folks in particular, have very stressful jobs, but that rate of incidents in a force of our size was of concern to me. I guess, rather than, you know, adding more folks before we are addressing whatever the issues are with the current ones is one way I would look at that. I mean, you could say, "Oh, we need more police because the ones we have are all stressed." But I'm mildly concerned that maybe there's need to, you know, correct the situation that we have now before we expand the force.
I share the concern. I do think that they are related. It relates to officers moving off of shifts to fill holes, and we do have vacancies in the police department right now. We're aggressively trying to recruit for those vacancies, but we're very, very choosy. And so, that's the difficulty right now, but I think the two are related. And that is, that is why it is, in terms of all of the unmet needs that were listed, this is, I think, one that merits the council's consideration.
Can I ask something? So, does that mean basically one out of every six police officers is on stress leave or has stress issues?
I'll need to get back with you on the precise.
You just said it was 33 people, and my recollection was either six or seven of the police force, seven were on some kind of stress medical leave. And that seems like a heck of a lot of people. That's one out of 20% of your force has got some medical leave issues with stress?
Let me provide the council with the exact numbers.
I'd say what would be helpful, too, is just the ratio of police officers to citizens here, and then also maybe in a neighboring jurisdiction or two, just for comparison purposes as well, if you're going to be doing that.
And if, on that same note, I think we're going to, if we're going to look at those numbers, my understanding, you know, when we've talked about this before, our ratios may be higher because of the need for overlaps and inefficiencies that happen in a smaller city, given how you have to run a police force. So, I think that has to be accounted for. Simple ratios are not always, you know, workable. You have to compare apples to apples, and jurisdictional size has a large part to play in that.
I don't disagree, but I mean, if it's 10 times the ratio, then maybe there's something going on that we ought to be aware of. But I think that's relevant also to determine whether we want to add an additional officer.
Don't disagree with that. It's worth looking at, but I just think that we need to make sure that we're looking at comparable numbers.
Okay.
All right.
We get 127?
Ron?
And I really don't want to go here, but I need to ask the question so we have the information. Because scenario 2B, essentially, depending upon how we come out on the police officer and the other position we talked about, if there additions are add-ons, says it's reducing essentially, I believe what was mentioned, the school transfer by 340, 4700. Are there any items within the school's operating budget that, sometimes there are things in there that are still essentially one-time expenses that theoretically could be made up if there's a surplus mid-year or something? Because I, if you're just taking it out of operating, my concern is that's what, five teachers? Something along those lines? And, you know, I have a very hard time supporting that. If it's, if there's some other way to make that work temporarily, so at least they get to share in it if there's an increase, you know, I'd be willing to talk about that, but I'm a little concerned about, I don't know, the overwhelming, and I know some people are more vocal than others in the community, but the overwhelming stuff I've heard is the concern about class size and the number of teachers and things. And that, I'm a little concerned that's going to address that directly. So, that's what I'm concerned about with this proposal. So, if there's any other information that can help along those lines, it would be helpful. Maybe there isn't. Maybe the answer is there isn't, but somebody needed to ask.
So, Ron, is your question of whether there's other, other things, other than operational that can be absorbed?
Well, I'm trying to get a sense. I mean, you can't dictate to the schools how they absorb something, and that, that's a concern. And, you know, I know they went back and reduced their, what their initial ask, and what we got was after it had been through a lot of permutations, and they already cut it. So, I don't, I don't know, just like on our side, we identified a few things and said, "Okay, well, these are capital projects. We'll fund them this way." Is there anything on their side that gets you to the same place?
That could move, that could move off their operating. That they could move off their operating...
And I don't... I don't know, but I wanted to put that out there, even though I don't... I think the answer's no, but I'm willing to listen if somebody wants to raise it.
Can I ask a question about the use charge? So I know, I don't know who's best to address this, but the use charge, that's not a true out-of-pocket expense, correct? It's an estimate of the actual quote-unquote "cost" to provide certain services to the recreation department?
My understanding, it was calculated based on the hours of time that were spent over the past year, and that was projected into the next year. And I might look back at the school staff just to confirm if that's the case.
No, that would be the actual expense of keeping the buildings open for extended hours on weekends and evenings. It's custodians, it's scheduling, it's a security...
But for example, the custodian, are you paying him overtime? Or is it just the guy that's part of his job?
No, we expense half, a point-five custodian to the cost. We keep us, we track those costs separately. It's not that we just estimate how much these things cost. It's that we actually have...
It's ending to be a longer conversation.
That we track the actual cost. And at a previous work session, I had given you an accounting of this cost in previous years. Part of it is for scheduling, part of it is for building, supervision and security, part of it is for custodian, and then also the utility costs of keeping the lights, the gas, the water for extended hours in the evenings, on the weekends, and then over the summer.
Mr. Tarter, can I just add, it's a cost that we would not incur if they were not using the facility.
So basically, it's your position that, for example, you wouldn't hire that custodian? Like you'd have one less custodian or whatever it is, absent the need to clean up or whatever it is they're doing?
And it is primarily time card, hourly workers who are engaged specifically on the evening weekends and over the summer.
Okay. Could I ask you about the cable as well, since we're here? Is that, the cable TV, is that administered generally through you all? Not as a separate department? But it's sort of through the schools?
It has been historically, yes. With that, it is, they are school board employees, they are paid through the school board.
And part of their job is to televise things like this, but it seems like a fair amount of their other job is not, is to teach videography or things like that? Or no, that's not the case?
On this year, the, one of the television staff is teaching one course in videography and television production. However, instead of expensing that to the television station and the community service fund, we've made sure to account and expense that salary and its benefits for that course to the school operating budget, to make sure that that gets accounted for properly for the state.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anything else on scenario two? Why don't we move to scenario two B? Council members?
We did two B.
We did two B, sorry about that. Sorry about that.
No one said two B or not two B yet, I know.
Someone's going to, oh, you just did.
I was flipping back on my sheet. So why don't we move to scenario three? This was the $1.27 rate. I know that some council members wanted to talk about it. Mr. Duncan came up with something different than three.
Right, yeah, I think my proposal... My turn? I think my proposal that I submitted tonight would supplant scenario three, in my view. I'm not sure, I can speak for anyone else, but I felt that what I presented was a new and improved version of that.
Mr. Tarter, did you want to speak to three at all?
It was never my, it was where I wanted to end up, but it wasn't how to get there. That was through the city manager. So I don't, I'm not wedded to three, any of the specifics of three, so no.
Okay. So that takes us through all the scenarios unless I'm missing, missing any... Scenario four, sorry. Sorry about that. I was looking, the sheets are...
That was this original?
Yeah, it was, it's now on the original sheet, not on the additional sheet. So my apologies for that. So if we can talk about scenario four? Council members, thoughts? Mr. or Ms. Berry, and then Mr. Kalin?
Well, scenario four was, I thought, a reasonable compromise. It recognized the importance of the school budget. It was a 10% school growth as opposed to the 14 or 16, depending on how you do your mathematics. It kept, you know, it recognized the importance of stormwater. It kept the fund balance intact. It did, however, have a significant impact on the school transfer. I thought, you know, scenario four was the way to go. I continue to think that, but I am certainly willing to get to yes. And I don't know what yes is, but that would be, scenario four certainly would be my preferred option.
Mr. Kalin?
I'd like to echo what Ms. Berry said without repeating everything. We said we would go with two B in the spirit of compromise. And that's what we mean by spirit of compromise. Because two B is basically thirteen of the fourteen percent increase. So I think our view has been pretty flexible, even though we would have preferred as well the scenario four. Thank you.
Any other council members on scenario four? Sounds like that's two members are supportive of four. So just going over the quick...
Tally?
Tally. So scenario one, Mr. Tarter, Mr. Pepe, and myself would be willing to consider that. Scenario two, Mr. Snyder, Mr. Pepe, myself, and Mr. Tarter. Scenario two B was supportive by Ms. Berry, Mr. Kalin, possibly Mr. Pepe, possibly Mr. Tarter, and myself. Then scenario three is supplanted...
Supplanted by Mr. Duncan's.
By Mr. Duncan's. And I believe that...
You gotta count one for that one, huh? Come on.
Did you get two?
Lose the two, lose the second.
Oh, okay. I am on a roll.
Yes, well done, Mr. Tarter.
Thanks, Ron. I'm like, trying to jot this down on two hours of sleep. This is a lot of fun.
No, this is where you reach the point, like when you're going to buy the car and you start to leave the showroom, and the guy turns to you and says, what will it take to have you drive out of here in this car right now? That's kind of where we are.
All right, so that's Phil and Dave Tarter on the proposal by Mr. Duncan.
Number four is...
Mr. Kalin?
Just to confirm, I was understanding that Mr. Snyder will not be here when we take the vote. Is that true?
No, he'll be here on Monday.
He will be here, okay.
Yeah, and as far as we know, my understanding, and I was not at the work session, where he presented option two, the peer option two. So I, my understanding is that that's where, what he's supportive of.
So how are we gonna get to yes?
And scenario four, just to round it out, Garner's support from Ms. Johanna Berry and Mr. Ira Kalin. So... Thank you. So if my calculations are correct, scenario...
Two B.
Two and two B have... Have the possibility of moving forward with a council majority.
Yes.
Is that right?
Two.
Cindy, do I have those numbers right?
Yeah, two had four with no qualifications per my notes. And two B range from two to five when you add in the maybe. So the only ones with the potential for four or more is two and two B.
All right, where do you all want to go?
Well, we could talk about, we could talk about what the differences are between the two. I mean, that's kind of what it gets down to. And let's see if we can tally those. I mean, I heard a discussion about the police position, and I heard it, and there's a discussion about the school funding. Those are the two differences I've seen so far, unless there's another one.
Well, I think the original, both two and two B had the police officer. Actually, the difference is...
Oh, the difference is the sustainability.
Sustainability officer.
Yeah.
Or sustainability position.
And importantly, the way the swing happens between two and two B is that at the $1.31 rate, and two B, the...
You keep the capital.
That's right. The swing is PEGO. How much PEGO is paid for out of the tax rate and how much PEGO is paid for with one-time money.
Right, and one way of, one way of addressing that is if members, a hybrid of two B would be reducing the tax rate and doing less on PEGO. It's another permutation of it. I, I'm personally not inclined to do that, but that could be another option.
Could you explain that further?
Yeah, so what's at stake, I think, and maybe others could characterize it differently. But next year, when we have our capital program, and if we do not have surplus funds to pay for the PEGO part of it, then we would need to either not have any PEGO capital or raise the tax rate by about a penny and a half in order to restore this funding from the budget.
So basically, to get to the tax rate, the simplest way of putting it, I think, is with option peer two, just peer option two, about $468,000 is deducted out of what we would be doing on capital. Versus under two B, you're only deducting $44,000 on capital. So the question is, do council members want to keep the tax rate? Or I'm sorry, keep at $1.31 if this is where we go? Or try to shave off to get to $1.30 and not do some of the capital projects?
So that would be option two C.
That would be two C.
Right.
So that...
What would those projects be?
Well, it's really the source of funding. So what we're not proposing is to actually in FY14, cut the CIP by that amount. It's really how you, how you fund it. And so right now, we have built into the tax rate two cents to handle pay-as-you-go capital. Under two B, under scenario two, we pull a penny and a half of that out of the tax rate and fund it instead with FY13 surplus.
Other way, and again, it's not quite exactly the same delta, is to compare the PEGO is 468, is that right? The school amount we're talking about in two B is 345.
340, yeah.
So that's another way to look at it, Phil, is PEGO or five teachers. That's, I mean, there's ways you can compare it that way, or four teachers or something. So we're somewhere in a, if we're in a hybrid, there's probably, I was thinking, the easiest way to do this is put a list of the things that are potentials to be traded and just put a dollar amount on it so people see what the trade-offs are. And they have to think about, priority-wise, what do they value?
Right, and really, the difference between two and two B that we've identified are, one, the sustainability coordinator and admin, and then the other is the school operating and restoring PEGO further. And the C option would be reducing a penny and doing less on PEGO. Mr. Tarter?
Two things. One, I mentioned the police officer. Again, I would say, unless it's needed for accreditation, I would look to dropping that. Sustainability person, the same thing. I would seek to avoid or not fund that position. And then thirdly, if I could, Wyatt, you and I spoke a day or two ago about the possibility of, with respect to capital improvements for the city hall and the idea of doing just, bonding this 2014, I think, the million or so dollars for security purposes, but not going beyond that. Do you recall speaking of that with me?
Yeah, what's at issue then is when the debt service for the city hall project comes online. And so we have budgeted, and I'll look to Mr. LaContrae for the figure of the amount of debt service that's funded in the FY14 budget for the city hall project.
Well, we don't break it out. It's by how we're gonna issue the debt. We've budgeted $266,000. But that doesn't necessarily mean that it covers all the city hall debt. It's gonna be a combination of things. So to try to pull it out and take a fraction of 266, just...
Wyatt, I'm not sure I understand. In other words, we haven't started any of the improvements yet, correct?
We have started the sprinklers, the elevators, and the critical stuff that you were talking about. And that's built into the FY14 debt service, a portion of it that Mr. LaContrae is speaking to. If you all are referring to the front expansion and the rear expansion, the parking structure for which you've agreed to let us do some architectural work before we proceed with any further, there is no FY14 debt service plan for those because those will be a later issue. And so they're not at play in this budget, so it will not save you any dollars on the tax rate for FY14.
But you and I had a conversation, Wyatt, about, I think, capital improvements above and beyond the improvements that Cindy Messer just described, did we not?
The, what's the debt service that we budgeted in FY14 for the city hall?
I don't have it specifically, again, it's by issue. We take all the debt in the CIP and say, in 2014, we're gonna issue X amount, and that's gonna produce this debt service number. It's not broken out by what city hall and what's, you know, whatever the other projects are.
So, but what are we anticipating for FY14 as far as debt for city hall? What have we contemplated? I guess my point is that if we're not gonna do some of those things till later on, then in fact, maybe it could come out of the budget for FY14 if in fact, they're not on track to proceed during FY14.
Yeah. That's what we're trying to identify.
The only thing that would be in 14 is the critical renovations and the police safety evidence. So on the project chart, and again, chart that we had, the only projects we're moving forward with right now in this year are the rest of the roof, the sprinkler system, the elevators, and the police.
Yeah, I, the, I had a notion that there was, the prior years, the prior year, four million, we would have had debt service in that, and I think I'm incorrect about that.
We haven't issued those debts. They've been approved in the budget for 12 and 13 for like the design work and the construction for the front and the structured parking. The budget has approved those, but we haven't issued them, and so we're not calculating. We did a very granular analysis in terms of the timing of the issue. So Mr. LaContrae went back and really looked in a more granular timing.
No.
No.
Thank you.
All right, okay. So again, just looking at priorities, the... Mr. Kalin?
I don't think it's fair.
It's fair to say that the 344...
Is five teachers.
Is five teachers. There's a $3.9 million increase in the transfer. To say that the last 344 is five teachers, I think is a misconception of the way budgets work, and you know that, Ron.
Well, what I know from my years on the school board are the things that can be controlled at the last minute are staffing levels. Those are the only decisions you basically can control, and it basically affects how many teachers you hire at the end of the day. Now, the school board can clarify that if that's incorrect.
But I don't understand what that has to... We're talking about the next year's budget. So you're telling me that 3.6 million is already locked up? That there's, that's it, it's finished? And the only flexibility exists is in the teachers?
Well, again, the school board will have to speak to this. They know the current situation better. I know when I was there and when we were cutting the per pupil spending, we already cut supplies, we were very conservative on the estimates for fuel. We prayed it didn't snow, things like that. So that's because it just wasn't there, the reserve got chopped from, it used to be several percent, down to enough that you have to have a little bit there in case too many kindergarteners show up the first day and you need to hire teachers. And so at the end of the day, the only thing you can change, because you have to issue these, your contracts for a year by a certain date, are the staffing levels. And so that's generally how it works. That's usually what gets cut. So essentially, what you're talking about are either classes that don't happen or size of classes. It depends on which, whether you're in elementary or high school or something. Those are the variable issues. And that's what the other counties do. When Fairfax closed the gap, they did it by saying, we're so big, we can do an average of three students per class across the board and save so many millions of dollars. It's a little trickier here because it's so small that you can't exactly figure out how many teachers you need at each level. And there's this little dance that goes on right as they're doing the staffing and projecting it. But that's just my understanding. I mean, and that could be wrong, and certainly the school folks can clarify that.
Mr. Shields or Mr. LaContrae, as far as the percentage increase, under scenario two B, what would the increase to the school transfer be?
That's shown on the sheet, and so it would be an operating transfer increase of thirteen-point-one percent as opposed to the fourteen-point-three that was requested by the school board.
Fourteen point, I'm sorry, what was the original?
It would go from fourteen-point-three to thirteen-point-one.
Okay. So a little over a percentage drop.
Right.
And a far cry from the ten percent under scenario four.
Right.
Which would be four percent, over four percent.
Right.
Between those two scenarios. So the delta, as far as the schools are concerned, between two B and four is a little over ten percent. Or I'm sorry, about three percent.
Three percent.
So that's what we're talking about.
Three percent to thirteen.
Okay. And then between the full fund of the schools, we're looking at a percentage. So that's the delta.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Callen?
Again, I thought we were working toward a compromise here. That was the impression that was left with last week, or last session. I have not pursued the issue-
No, I did check with the city attorney about the transitional retirement, which is simply a policy. It is not a legal requirement. It could be changed. I didn't pursue that. Left that off the table. This was a compromise figure.
Ira, I'm just trying to explore all the options to make sure we've explored everything. You know, I don't want to go down the path of threatening to open up other things and be more punitive. You know, let's focus on where we are. There's a delta here, and I'm just figuring out if there's a way to close the gap. And at the end of the day, it'll be what it'll be. But I want to make sure we get all the information out. That's all.
All right. So just going back to where we're at, we're somewhere, it sounds like, between option two and two B.
Yep.
So, you know, one way that we can handle this is have both come up for a vote and go from there and just vote the options, or we can try to work it through tonight.
I think what would be nice, I know Mr. Snyder's not here, but I think it's helpful to the public if we can walk away from here saying, look, here are the options we're going to have on the table, and here are a couple variables. Let's try and identify those so that people can respond and say, I like this or not. You know, there may be more people who respond and say, well, absolutely no way do I want to fund these things. And so that's, it's good to know. What is bad is to walk in and at the last minute suddenly say, I got yet another new idea Monday night. I'd hope we get things on the table tonight so we have a range that we can, we're all going to live with one way or the other. Does that make sense?
Yeah. And that's what I'm trying to narrow it down to. So it sounds like the range is those two, scenario two and two B. I think that's the range, and if we can try to refine that and go with one versus the other.
Right. And that's why I wanted to list kind of the things that are on the table. Because here's what I've seen happen in all the years I've done this. Sometimes you get so much feedback with all the things that are on the table, it's very easy to sit there and say, well, let's pick something we didn't even bring up because there's nobody here to oppose it. And suddenly, then somebody else gets shafted and didn't even get a chance to speak up. And it's not done knowingly. It's done, you know, sort of in, well, gee, nobody said, don't do this. If we can agree on those items that are in play, that's helpful.
I mean, that's going to require council members to start figuring out where they're at.
If this is the range, that's fine. That's what we'll work with that.
I think that's where we are.
Mr. Callen and then Ms. Barry.
Again, you know, I thought we were trying to compromise. We moved from ten to thirteen, one percent less, and now we're supposed to talk between thirteen and fourteen. That's what the negotiation is?
I believe what Nader proposed was to say, come Monday, we'll be essentially looking at these two. But within those two, I'm hearing a couple of different variations about sustainability, police officer, school, Pago. I just want to make sure we talk enough tonight to get them on the table so everybody knows what to expect Monday. I think that's fair to do. That's all.
And I think what Ron is trying to do is just drill down on those two options and make sure that there's not permutations upon the permutations that we already have. So probably, we need to just have consensus if we're going with option, if what's on the table is two and two B, that the cut to the sustainability coordinator and admin, that members are supportive of it, who are supportive of those options. Ms. Barry?
I think it's also important to be very specific that these, that two B requires a cut in the school budget of three hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. We're not going to get away from that. I think we just need to say that. There it is. That's what's on the table. The other piece is, I mean, if it were my preference, I would, I believe that Mr. Charter has certainly brought this issue to the table. I mean, I would, I personally would like to see the eighty thousand dollars for the sustainability coordinator and the O-com position. I'm willing to negotiate on that. I mean, that would be my preference because I agree with Mr. Charter. I find the issue, I don't think it was well explained by our police chief, why we have seven officers on light duty and why we need another police officer. I feel uncomfortable having that conversation only because I don't understand what our officers do. And so, you know, I can't, I can't sort of wrap my hands around it, no more than I can wrap my hands around what three hundred and forty-four thousand dollars means to the school system. I can't tell you what that is. I can't tell you if it's five Spanish teachers. I can't tell you if that's, I don't know what that is, and I don't know what impact it is. I just know it's a number, and I trust my colleagues that they will be able to figure out what to do with that number. I appreciate Mr. Pepe's willingness to put a face on that number, because I think putting faces on numbers is powerful. But it's also a rhetorical device. I don't have any more visibility into the school budget than I do into the police budget. So I'm really at a standstill here. I mean, two B is as close to a compromise as I want to get, even though it makes me deeply uncomfortable because I am, I was comfortable with one twenty-nine. To get to one thirty-one is difficult for me, but if it means that we will pass a budget, I'll get there with you. I'll hold hands and get there with you. But I don't, again, the sort of the police officer sustainability, I just don't know how much I can fool around with that. If it were my preference, as I say, I would jettison the police officer for the sustainability officer, but that's just, that's just me.
And I think what I was asking was, let's just say, it sounds like those two things are on the table, and we'll talk about that Monday. But everybody knows they're on the table. That's the only point I wanted to make. And certainly, it's worthwhile to put a face on a dollar twenty-nine versus a dollar thirty-one. Some people will say, that's groceries that next week or something. I don't know. You know, the only money we have is the money we take from the public. So I understand that, and that's got to be out there as well.
Mr. Shields?
I mean, we've got a request for more information and more explanation about the need for the police officer. So-
We can provide that.
And we're talking about eighty thou on each slot, right?
I don't know if that moves the needle one way or the other.
I mean, that doesn't dramatically move the needle.
Yeah, I don't think it does.
But it's an important policy question. And so we'll get more information on that.
Both of them together, it's a half cent, and I think that's significant. That does move the needle.
Yeah, sure. So why don't we, why don't we list that as, Cindy, if you're keeping a tally, as an open item that we need to come back to with further explanation? And given, I think, where we're headed tonight, we may have several items. So I'm trying to figure out how we best handle Monday night's meeting because there's going to be some work that's going to be done in the dais.
Let me just say a word about that. As you recall, the budget ordinance is somewhat complex. You've got every fund listed. And so it is not a good idea to, from the dais, start scratching out numbers and writing other numbers in because it has permutations for all the funds.
Right.
What would be preferable is if there is not consensus tonight on one scenario to narrow it down to two, and we would pre-prepare those two ordinances and have them be fully, you know, all the math is correct in those two options, and then you vote on either of those two. Or at any rate, if there's going to be a change to either of those two, they're minimal. The more changes from the dais, the more opportunity there is for the budget to be.
There will be mistakes.
There will be mistakes.
There will be mistakes.
That's what happened.
So I think that's why we're taking the time to talk about the sustainability and the police officer scenario two.
Is there appetite for either of those? I mean-
To what?
Well, Mr., we'll speak for Mr. Snyder. He put in the one as an add. So obviously, he had an interest in the one. The school difference is already built in because that's the difference between the one scenario and the other. So that's not a separate item. The sustainability and the police seem to be the only real two items that are left on the table to talk about, other than A or B. Is that a way to conceptualize it?
The conceptualization is, what are we doing about those two positions?
Are those the only two open items?
I think so.
For two B, yes.
Unless somebody wants to put one out, something else out there.
No, no, no. I don't want to add anything to it. I'm just trying to have it clear in my mind what is still open. I'm ready to go with two B. If you want to talk about the two positions, okay. But that, is that where we're at?
It's sounding like it, but we need to resolve these two slots.
Well, I mean, the two slots can be resolved without the other component being impacted.
How do you mean?
Well, I don't know.
I mean, if you exclude both positions.
Okay.
Okay.
It's a hundred and sixty thou.
Okay. And it's still the, moving from fourteen to thirteen percent for the growth of the school budget.
Correct.
Well, that's the school thing. Yeah.
Yeah. So if that's, if we compromise on that, we can discuss the other stuff.
Well, that's what we're trying to do. So that's what I'm trying to get a readout. So we're not trying to do this on the dais and trying to figure out whether we're going to fund the police officer and the sustainability slash admin position.
So-
Ms. Barry?
So just to make clear for the folks in the audience and frankly, for myself, that the two B option embraces or understands that the orphan positions will be taken out of the school fund balance, the school balance, the school transfer. So therefore, the schools will be three hundred and forty-four thousand dollars down. Done. That's understood. The other piece, I mean, yes, no. The other piece is the two positions, the eighty and eighty for a hundred and sixty. Is it both or none?
What's written here is one of those positions is added back, not both. That's the difference that I-
And if we didn't do the one, if Mr. Snyder is the only one who has the appetite for the one.
For the police officer.
For the police officer. I mean, I, again, you know, my personal, you know, position is clear, but I am speaking for myself. If there's no appetite for that one position, then the eighty thousand that's saved goes where? Into fund balance or something, or what happens?
Well, the council could direct-
Direct how it's used. The, you've got your deducks here, so you've got your, those items could be restored by that amount, and that would increase our capacity for capital projects in FY fifteen. The city has never done it before, but we could have fractions on the tax rate. We've never moved that way. Most of the other jurisdictions do. They go out to cut it at a finer level. Sure.
Wyatt, anything else that you want to share about the police officer before that? Because I think we're gravitating to not funding that.
Well, I will get the chief to speak to that position and send a memo to the council. I think the key points about that is that it was a reduction from our force status of prior to 2010. Now, we went, we made a lot of cuts in the police department. We cut admin out of the police department. We cut command staff out of the police department. We only cut one police officer as we went through the recession, and this was that position. So this would get us back to where we were, and I think it does, when we talk about the phenomenon of police officers needing to go out and go off shift because of stress-related issues, it is generally because of lack of staffing and the strain of having to either double shift or meet holes in other shifts.
Ms. Barry?
I'm just, you know, I think that there's, I mean, I'm sensing that there's sufficient lack of clarity here about that situation. I think it is not only the addition of the police officer, but the fact that there are seven on light duty that has raised, at least in some council members' minds, kind of what's going on with the police department. So I mean, I think if the chief is going to speak to us on that, she will need to speak to us also on why there are seven officers on light duty in a city of twelve thousand two-point-two square miles, three-plus police officers. My personal position is that this is not Boston or Chicago, and so I'm kind of curious about why we have that. But I, you know, I haven't, again, I have no visibility into being a police officer and what it is. So I think if the chief is going to give us an explanation about the one, she would want to put it in a context of the other police officers as well and sort of explain why this particular position is critical and how it affects, you know, the entire department. But I'm not sensing any appetite here for that position. But I am sensing, looking around the table, that there might be an appetite for a half-cent break on the tax rate. I've never, I didn't know that people did that, but that's-
It's not a half cent.
Or whatever it is. It's not, it's a quarter of a cent. It's, yeah, it's eighty thou.
No, but the proposal, it's just one.
There's only one.
Well, in one of the scenarios, I guess there's one in each. Is that what it is?
Under scenario two, there's-
Well, so you took the two out of one, then you look at the other.
Yeah.
But that's not-
Right now, let's focus on scenario two.
That's right.
Two and two B.
Both in two.
No, two B.
Two B.
So in two B, it's, it would shave off a quarter of a penny.
Not even a quarter.
Fine.
So, not, less than a quarter of a penny for the officer. So it sounds like we don't have all the information. Are any members ready to make that decision without hearing from the chief?
I'd like to hear from the chief, yeah.
But I mean, are we going to, Mr. Mayor, are we going to hear, this is going to be a little odd on the dais on Monday, that we're going to hear and make a decision. I think this is a little weird. I think-
So that information would need to get to you in advance. And in some respects, that type of a discussion, every single situation is unique for each of the officers that are affected, and in some respects, it's not an appropriate thing to talk in a public meeting at all. So, but the question's been asked, and we'll get information as best we can to you on it.
So why don't we do this? I mean, either council members are ready to move forward or deduct that position out under scenario two B, or we wait till we get information and then try to pull it together. So I'm hearing some members-
Well, one option is you pull it out, and that makes the difference between two and two B seem a little clearer because that means two has the schools and the two positions, and two B doesn't have either of the three. I mean, you could proceed that way or some mix. That's the question.
I mean, that wouldn't be my recommendation. I guess to my mind, I have doubts about both, and I could be convinced otherwise, but at this point, I do have doubts on both. And I guess my inclination would be to start from taking them both out, which could, on one scenario, amount to a half cent, which I think is starting to make some difference. So that would be my sort of default setting, but I could be convinced otherwise.
Mr. Callen? Do you have any thoughts on that?
I don't have strong feelings, but I can go with leave.
Okay. So for the purposes of Monday, if we can prepare the scenario two B with the police officer position not being there, the sustainability officer wasn't there to begin with.
Right.
And then adjust accordingly. And as a backup, if we receive the chief's explanation, we can certainly take it up again if members feel strongly that it should, the police officer position should stay in. Does that seem like a good path forward to address two B? Ms. Barry?
I think that is the right way to go forward. As I said, I don't sense, you know, enthusiasm one way or the other. But would the, would the city manager then be directed to take the eighty thousand and put it, you know, at his discretion in Pago or fund balance or what would his-
I mean, that's a question. I mean, that's-
I'm still shooting for version two, but I think I'm-
I think you're a lone wolf there, you know?
I mean, one option would be just reducing the tax rate outright by the eighty thousand, whatever that is, that fraction. So-
Sure. I'm all about reducing the tax rate. I'm all about reducing the tax rate.
Mr. Callen, do you have any thoughts on that? Mr. Duncan? On what you do about reprogramming the 80,000?
What you said, what Mr. Tarter said, and I thought the two of you agreed with, was okay with me.
Okay, which would be...
I actually didn't say anything. That's what we...
He just nodded and said, "Yeah, that's good, whatever." Yeah, carry on.
The position, I feel that I would start with not funding, I mean, the scenario two with the sustainability and the police officer.
Take much.
The police officer, I would not start with funding either.
And where would you program the money?
I gotta say, I don't have a great answer to that.
So, it's up to maybe...
Shields, do you have any recommendation on how you would reprogram the 80K under two B?
What we would do is take out the reduction of 44,000 for the Pago and restore the addition, the remainder of 36,000 for capital reserves.
Rather than reducing the tax rate by a fraction?
Yeah, it'd be a reduction of, I think, about one-third.
Okay. For the purposes of two B, is there any, any concerns about doing it that way?
Fine.
It's okay with me.
Fine.
I'm good with that. Ron? Okay, all right. So, I think we've drilled down scenario two. Wyatt, is that pretty clear of where we're at with scenario, what two B, I'm sorry, two B looks like?
Yep.
So, now we've got a two in the two B, and we just...
I think we got rid of the two, didn't we?
Yeah, so we moved...
No, no, what we, what the agreement was, was about if we had two B, what it would look like. My understanding is, we're still going to have two and two B on the table. That's, that's my understanding.
I don't think so. I think two got off the table.
I see, that's still my impression, too.
No, I didn't, I didn't hear that. Maybe others can clarify.
Okay.
Well, again, yeah, I mean, we can, we can run it again if we need to. Are there members who are supportive of two?
Yes.
Okay, so that...
And Mr. Snyder.
Oh, wait a minute, Mr. Snyder's not here.
Well, he wrote it. Let's put it that way.
Not here.
Okay.
You're not here, you don't get to vote.
And Mr. Snyder, and from what I read that he was sending out, he was stating that he planned on fully funding the schools.
Yeah, I, I think it's fairly safe to say that he's at two.
All right.
I'd say keep it on the table until Monday.
I'd agree with that.
Because we've got four for two.
Okay, so, it sounds like we don't have consensus around two, there's a possibility of two or two B going forward. Mr. Callen?
I'd like to clarify this. Again, I'm beginning to question the good faith and effort at compromise here. We moved off of the 129 and off to 10 percent and came up 75 percent to what was requested, and now we could get nothing. Then that basically just means just a flat, flat out voting, it's just a flat vote, that no effort at compromise whatsoever.
Two, two, the two and two B are both compromises for a number of us, Byra. I don't know which one we're going to get four votes for, but they are. And I know you want to get your pound of flesh out of the schools, but the bottom line is, they're both compromises, and we don't have four votes for either one at the moment.
Well, I was under the impression last session that we were going to try to work out a compromise, because we had indicated here, Johann and I, that we would go up and we'd go off of the 129 and try to meet as much of the need. So, why, you consider going 133 to 131 a compromise, that was never something that I think was generally considered to be a compromised position. I don't know who you were compromising with on that, but I don't consider this, I consider this to be simply a flat four vote, and that's all this is about, and the effort to compromise has been a chimera.
Other council members? Okay. Sounds like at least we need to put both forward. I don't see another way around it, and we just vote it. So, that's where it's at. Shields, does that give you direction on preparing for Monday?
It does. So, there will be two, two versions that will be prepared in the packet and posted tomorrow, and they will be scenario two B, and that would have a tax rate at $1.31, and it would not have the police officer. And with the reduction of the police officer, the Pago would be fully funded, and the capital reserves would be reduced, not by the $500,000 shown, but by 464. And then two, option two, will be presented exactly as shown.
Okay.
Right.
Can I speak?
Yeah, please.
I thought we were...
Eliminate those two positions in option two, is that not the case?
No.
I mean, we can certainly talk about it in option two of eliminating both positions.
And what do you do with that money?
Maybe reduce the tax rate by half a cent.
Okay.
What I can, I can just say is, I did talk to Mr. Snyder, he felt pretty strongly about keeping the police officer there, so since he came up with two, now we're talking about two C. Because he did feel strongly about the police officer, so I just share that.
So, if I could, I'm sorry.
Mr. Callen?
I'd like to pursue that. Who, who was strongly in favor of the 133? Who was prepared that that was their primary, other than Ron? Who else was supporting 133 at the outset as the way to go?
I, I think, I had mentioned that that was within my range.
Okay.
My range, I think, actually has started, if I'm not mistaken, at the current tax rate up to about 135 as a range. But I didn't particularly, you know, fall one way or another on the 133 item. Other council members?
The two C, is that what Mr. Tarter was talking about?
Or we change two.
We, I mean, unfortunately, Mr. Snyder's not here, but...
We should discuss it. We spent a lot of time discussing two B.
I think I agree with what Mr. Tarter said, if he could say it again. Scenario two, without the police officer and the sustainability coordinator.
Do a half cent.
And then do a half-cent reduction.
I would, I would, you know, keep looking for another half cent, just to, you know, make it easier to write it on the website, but...
But you can't do... I mean, I mean, that's fine, that's absolutely fine, but, but suddenly, the word of Dave Snyder is held sacred until it's not held sacred. So, I mean, it's either the Dave Snyder version, or it isn't. So, you can't be fooling around with the Dave Snyder version and then say it's not the Dave Snyder version. So, it's either the Dave version, or it's not the Dave version.
I would love to be associated with something that's sacred, so, you know, maybe, maybe you could put my name on that, just as a placeholder.
You are the face of the, of the budget, or you're not, Mr. Duncan, yeah. So, I mean, come on, let's not fool around here. If, if we are talking, I mean, I'm, I'm delighted to change two, but I don't like this. We'll change it until it's not the Dave Snyder version, but it is the Dave Snyder, and Dave isn't here, but, you know, if we get the Ouija board, we're going to get...
If it is changed, it is indeed not the Dave Snyder version.
I mean, dare, dare I say, Mr. Snyder, I'm sure is going to be getting a recap of this meeting. What, what we may need to do, and I hate to do this, is he's probably going to want to provide, and again, I'm just venturing a guess, but he may want to offer this as an option.
Fine.
So, we could be looking at three scenarios.
Well, or, or we agree to change two. I mean, that's...
Or, or we agree to change two.
We come in with two with that model.
If I can get a second, can I, can I make that four options?
Oh, Lord God. Oh, Lord God.
If you want to create a total circus.
In terms of administrative simplicity, two, you know, in terms of the changes that are being discussed, they're, they're at least all in one fund, so the chance of error with the, the changes that have been discussed is minimized. I'd rather do that than have three versions out there that, you know, have too many gradations.
Yeah, okay. So, it sounds like there's at least some consensus of removing, removing, hold on, let's make sure that Wyatt's...
We're not going to vote.
So, Wyatt, I think on two, two gets changed, to removing those two positions and then reducing the tax rate accordingly.
So, that's what two is then?
Well, that's the only thing I've actually seen four people sitting here saying they would support.
Okay, well, all right, so that's different than what I thought just a minute ago. So, we strike, strike the two positions and show it at $1.30 and a half. That's what we're talking about for, that's option two now.
Right.
Okay.
And if Mr. Snyder feels strongly about it, he can, he can amend it and try to move it forward.
Okay.
Mr. Callen?
You can do what you want, but I think it's ridiculous that, you know, when you have Arlington or Fairfax, a half a cent is a big deal. But negotiating this at half-cent levels for the Falls Church City budget is frankly silly.
So, where are we?
Yeah, so, again, I don't have strong feelings about whether we have those two positions in or not. My, my preference actually is to keep, keep it with what Mr. Snyder proposed, because I think we'll have a cleaner debate about it.
Right, but I'm willing to, I'm willing to compromise with Mr. Duncan and Mr. Tarter and take them out for the proposal.
Okay.
And that's, that's what I'm hearing, that's what I'm hearing, trying to, because I haven't seen anything on the table that they were supporting until we kind of got to that point, that had some consensus.
Okay, so what do we have? We have two. There's no compromise here.
There's nothing left to discuss. There's no compromises. There's nothing. Did we recite? Chasing our tails, 460,000 dollars.
So, I mean, it, it sounds like, I, I just want to make sure that we know what's going to happen on Monday. It's likely that Mr. Snyder's going to want to keep those two positions in, since that was his original proposal, so he may make an amendment. I'm also sensing that certain council members want to eliminate those two positions and cut the tax rate by half a penny, which complicates the discussion with the public, et cetera. My preference and my suggestion would be, let's keep it with Mr. Snyder's approach, and if we want to amend down from there, that may be the better way to go. Unless there's strong feelings about removing those two.
I, I certainly would support anything that got us in the direction of a lower tax rate, given the constraints that we're working in. I just don't see these two positions in particular as, you know, they're very important, but they're not totally mission-critical.
I would agree. I would suggest removing them. I think it's easier to remove them and try to put them in than to try to get them out. I think it's just going to be too hard to do that.
It's the other way around. But, Ron?
I'll go with the starters.
Yeah, and I don't have strong feelings one way or the other about it. Byra and Johann, anything before we move on this?
No.
Byra?
Nope.
Okay. All right, so those would get eliminated in option two.
Okay, so then, in option two, the police officer and the sustainability coordinator are not in there, and the tax rate would be shown at $1.30.5.
Correct. And again, just so everybody's aware, I believe that Mr. Snyder felt very strongly, at least with the police officer position.
So, he can...
He can articulate that. Yep, yep, so...
I say, we're going to, if anybody, if the average citizen is impressed with a half-cent reduction, I think we're going to end up with a lot of criticisms for looking, looking for types of savings in that area of that magnitude.
Mr. Duncan, were you...
You know, on that, I, I'm in agreement with Mr. Callen. I, I would ask, I guess, if there's not another half cent that can be found in the budget that would bring us down to 130. And, you know, I'm making that suggestion with the full disclosure that I am not, you know, deeply informed enough to know how to go into the city budget and pick that out, but I agree with Mr. Callen that it seems silly to have, well, silly, I'd never use that word. It would be better, cleaner to have a 130 than a 130.5.
But, Mr. Duncan, I thought you just suggested reducing the rate and eliminating those two. Now, I'm hearing you say the opposite, so...
No, I, I, as I understand it, brings it from 131 to 130 and a half.
Right.
I'm in favor of bringing it down to 130, and I'm asking if staff can provide us with options for doing such by the same means that we're going to hear from the chief of police and the city manager is not in his head.
I think the city manager is saying, in half cents, we're not, we, we can't do this at the last minute.
All right, hey, you know what? I'm allowed to ask, if the manager says we can't do it, the manager's the boss.
Mr. Shields? Tab, I would point out, too, that other jurisdictions have fractional tax rates, and it's done all over the place.
So, why don't, if we're going to go with this hybrid of two, whatever it is, it is, you know, we're going to go with the half a cent there. Okay?
Meters can handle a half cent, right?
Mr. Shields? The computer may not handle.
Yeah, no, I'm just teasing.
All right. Okay, so I think we've got the two options that, that are going to be proposed, with the possibility that Mr. Snyder would want to add the police officer back in, just so everybody's prepared on how this may go Monday. Is that clear to council members and also to staff? Okay, so that gets us through the, the possibilities on the budget scenarios and ordinances, and then what I think we would do, assuming that there's only three, or two, possibly three motions on the tables, we would discuss them and then vote them based on how they're presented.
Two with an amendment, maybe.
Two with possible amendment, if Mr. Snyder wants to amend the police officer. And staff may want to have that prepared and talk to Mr. Snyder about that ahead of time, just so he may make that motion, so we're not trying to pencil in numbers from the dais. I think that that's going to be a problem. Okay? Okay. So, we are on to funding, I think we've resolved this, but...
Yes.
But, but it needs to just be said, just so we know what we're doing, is funding for the Falls Church TV station is, is going to be contained in the general government budget, NOCOM. So, I think we've resolved that, and we can move past that. Okay, but that is a policy decision and a funding decision. And I think Mr. Shields and Dr. Jones had worked that out.
We have, and Susan Finorelli has also worked with the cable television staff, and I think has thought through the administrative things. There's a few details that we'll need to work out, but we think they're all manageable.
And does that require a change in the agreement that we'll see later on?
I don't believe so. I think it's within the four corners of the agreement.
Okay, great. And then, on the use charge, that also, right now, under the scenarios, is contained in the general government budget, specifically under parks and racks. So, that, that's a difference in how we've been doing things before, and I believe that Mr. Shields and Dr. Jones have worked that out as well.
We have, and I would put forward, just in the future, that if there are ever any discussions about billing or cost allocations between the general government and schools, that we set a deadline of October of the year to have those discussions, to work those out, and so that they can be built into the budget and have the advanced discussions, and I think everybody's on board with that.
Yes, it did feel like a last-minute shock a little bit to have that, so... All right. Why don't we take five minutes, a little over five minutes, and come back at 9:15 before we take up the stormwater, unless members want to keep going?
What are we doing with stormwater?
I think we just need to go over very quickly. Just have a brief, brief discussion about it.
So, we're going to get back together at quarter after nine, is that...
Quarter after nine, yeah.
Okay.
So the cable TV budget is 1.78?
Why don't we come together?
Well, but that's because your 160 is going to stay with you. But you know how you've got 1.66?
Councilmember Mr. Duncan, Mr. Kaelin, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Tarter.
Do I have these backwards?
Yeah, that's backwards, because, no, 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 yeah, FCC TV is actually 1.66 because you don't transfer your peg fee. You know how you were transferring peg fee? You were paying your fair share and then keeping half of yours, so you'll get to keep it all.
All right.
Well, half on the TV, hopefully you spend the other on the rest.
All right, we now have the storm utility to discuss just very briefly. Wyatt, do you want to walk us through that?
Yeah, and I think I can do it very concisely. We never talked about this. This was in the memo of a week and a half ago. So a couple of policy issues. One is what I would recommend, that the council proceed with establishing the stormwater utility. And in that ordinance, there are a couple of key things to discuss. One, the appeals process. We have made, we have written into the text of the ordinance now that appeals go to the utility commission. And wanted to have a quick discussion with the council, whether you're on board with that.
Leave that door open.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Tina, can you leave that open, please?
The, and also expand, ultimately, we would do this in a separate ordinance, but there's, the utility commission is established in the city code, and it has oversight of the sewer and the water. And we would bring another code to you in May that would add to that portfolio, the stormwater. Now, the composition of the stormwater commission is three council members and two citizens. We may want to reconsider that composition, given the fact that we don't have a water system anymore, and we could weight it more towards citizens, if that's the council's direction. But the main point here is that we add the stormwater utility to the portfolio of the utility commission and have appeals go to the utility commission. And then, secondly, in the city charter, there's a provision that says that the council must adopt a tax rate and a budget by, I think it's by June 1st of each year. We would propose, in the stormwater utility ordinance, that we say that the rates must be set by July 1st of each year to give you, until July 1st, to set, to adopt a resolution that would set the rate for the stormwater utility, along with a credit program. So those would come to you at the same, at the same time you consider both together. And one note, Mr. Councilmember Duncan had noted that he wanted the credit program to apply before people were charged a fee. That is what the state code requires. And so if you put, if you build a BMP 10 years ago, you will get a credit for that before you, you know, in your first, in your first billing. And so that's what state code calls for. So those are the issues to discuss with the stormwater utility and make sure we're on the same page with before Monday night.
Any questions? Mr. Kaelin?
Wyatt, do you really think that a citizen filled a commission, Public Utilities Commission, really is in conditions to handle angry citizens coming in and saying that this didn't work, this didn't work, I'm being charged too much? That's awful lot for a citizen group, unless you're planning on some other support for this group, some sort of technical support.
Well, I'm glad you asked the question. My recommendation remains that we keep it administrative. I do think it's going to be a two plus two equals four type of exercise. And so I think the administrative handling of appeals is my recommendation. But when you look around the state, many of the localities have an appeals process. And we do have other citizen boards, the BOE. I mean, you can't take a heavier responsibility than the assessment for taxes. It is complex, and the pressure on those guys is high. They do get training, however, and the state code lays out what the composition of a BOE must be. It must have three professionals, it must have at least one appraiser, and so there's some controls in there to make sure you have a quality board. We would not necessarily have those types of criteria laid out for the utility commission. Certainly, the state code doesn't inform us that we must do it that way, so that's one thing to consider.
I think they would need some support, if you're going to do the citizen route, so that there's some technical support to help out through the discussions.
One thing that, now, I've made a recommendation that appeals not go to a board, but nonetheless, if it's the council consensus to have it, we'll present it that way. But one positive about having a citizen board fulfill that function is that, and also fulfill the oversight function for the utilities, is you'll get a board that will really start to understand sort of the pulse of what people are seeing out there and be a good sounding board for people and help inform policy on the running of this, of this new utility. So I think there's some positives to it, certainly as well.
Mr. Duncan?
Yeah, it's for that latter reason that I would suggest you go that route. Mr. Kaelin's right, though. I mean, you know, the BOE does have a tough job, and as we know, on the appointments committee, we're in the middle of some of that right now, same with the BZA. But, you know, you've got to try to put as much as you can in the hands of the people. There is an ambassadorial role that's helpful. Groups like that go out into the community and, no, 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 this is why we did what we did, it's rational, it's not arbitrary. And when you only have staff doing those kind of things, staff doesn't have any backup in the community explaining, you know, why they did what they did, and that's generally something that's good to provide, I think. So, the credit program, I wanted to ask, an existing BMP, yes. Is the thing going to be structured so that if I don't have an existing BMP, but I put one in before June 1st, I could get a credit on the bill, or? You see what I'm saying?
Yes.
If I acted now, or in the next month, and put in a BMP, I'd be able to, and there will be a process to educate people about that to some degree, as much as is practicable.
That's right.
Okay. The other question on the stormwater staffing levels, I don't think I can, based on what's here, answer the question, how many people are working in this utility? It's a 1.5 FTE reduction from what? What's, what is the total number of people who are working in the new stormwater slash sewer utility?
I think the FTE gets reduced down to a total of eight with that reduction.
Okay, so, and is it accurate to call it, as we've discussed, a kind of a merged or at least unified structure in terms of its operation and communications with the public, or is that not right?
Well, they'd be two separate funds financially.
Okay.
The way they're going to be managed, though, is we're going to have a lot of people working in both. And we'll just do cost allocation in the same way that we do between our water utility and our sewer utility today.
So on the sewer utility, then, if the FTE goes over there, how many people are working in the sewer utility?
That would increase it from, I believe that they are at five, and so they would go, they would increase to 6.5, and then you reduce it back to 5.5, because the billing function is going to Fairfax Water.
Gotcha. So 13.5 FTE is the total count for the stormwater and sewer utility. And is the impervious service fee at $18 fungible over time? I mean, if we get into it and find out, gee, we could collect a little bit less, and, I mean, we do have yearly opportunities to examine that number, is that right?
That is correct. What we would do, like we do with our other utilities, is try to lay out with council a five-year plan, and so we'd have rate stabilization, but that would be subject to a council decision each year.
Okay, that's fine. It could go either way, obviously. I mean, we get into it, we find out we don't have near enough money, then we, the point is, we can decide and discuss it every year.
That's right.
Thank you.
Anything else on the utility?
I'd just point out, ideally, one of the goals of one of these things is to motivate people to do what they have to to get the credit. So theoretically, you might see increasing rates, but a shrinking number of people paying them. I mean, it's really geared at pollution reduction. Remember, we talked about both, it's both the quantity and the quality of the runoff, and so hopefully, you know, that'll be a problem we have to deal with, but it's something we'll have, we'll have to deal with. It might be a good problem to have.
Do we have to pay other localities to run our water through their system? Like, for example, we got a, you know, 48-inch pipe full of water running through Arlington. We don't pay them any fees, do we?
No.
So it's just kind of the natural flow of water all the way down, is that's your business, that's your problem?
And it's reciprocal. We take a lot of Fairfax Water and we pick it up free of charge.
Gotcha. Well, it seems like it really goes one direction, so if we're not giving anything to Fairfax, we're just taking it, and the same thing in Arlington, but.
We do benefit from the fact that we're at the top of the watershed, but Trips Run has a decent watershed up above the city, so we do, we take in some, a fair amount of Fairfax Water.
Thanks.
So I think that takes us through the items. I just want to make sure that everybody's on the same page with it. So the ordinance to establish the water utility would go forward on the 22nd. The rate would be adopted and the credit would come back on July 1st?
Or need to be adopted by July 1st.
I'm sorry, would need to be adopted by July 1st. And then the appeals would be established in what we do Monday, Wyatt?
Yes, so in that ordinance, we'll have, it's a very minor change, but it'll say appeals after the director go to the utility commission.
And if we felt that training, et cetera, was needed, we can do that at a future time about what's required.
We'd bring a separate ordinance to you later that will.
Would it be an ordinance or a resolution?
The utility commission was created by ordinance, it's in the city code, so when we tweak it, that would be by ordinance.
Perhaps we should add something about training in there, requirement to receive some level of competency. Is there anything that the state does for utility commission?
I'll check.
Or BML even? All right.
Mr. Mayor, if, that's a great idea. If you go that route, there's usually some minor expense, but some expense involved in going to the training. We talked about this in the appointments committee, now to send the people down to BZA training, you ought to put them up in hotels, so just make sure it's okay legally to allow. There you go. That'll take care of it. There you go. Let's cut half of that FTE, and we're down to 1.30. Hey, you know.
All right.
Different money, different money. I know that now, I know that now.
That's right.
All right. Wyatt, you had listed the capital improvements program ordinance.
I just wanted to, so when we're looking at the agenda, then the next up would be the CIP, and then after that would be the tax rate ordinance. And unless there's any desire to discuss the CIP, we would shift to the tax rate ordinance. And on it, what I would propose, rather than having two ordinances, one at $1.31 and one at $1.30 and a half, have one ordinance at $1.31, and then that can be discussed. I think there's very low margin for error if there's a desire to change that, it's just one number in the ordinance, unlike the budget, which is more complex. It's sort of a question of what's the minimal confusion for the public, and so I think one ordinance on the tax rate at $1.31 would probably be minimally confusing, but that's the point for council discussion.
Do council members have thoughts on that?
I think we're at 1.31.
At 1.31.
What's going to be posted online would be the 1.31, so the question is, is it going to confuse anybody or not, or?
Just have one, one ordinance. We're going to have. We're going to have two budget ordinances in your packet, two and two B. And I would propose we just have one tax rate ordinance. And if there's a change to it, you change it on the dais.
And it's just a one number change, right?
Yeah.
Right.
Change it based on what happened in the budget in the first one.
Absolutely.
You will, that's what, that's why.
So if we approve two, then the budget, whatever, when that comes up is 30 and a half.
That's right.
Right, we don't even talk about 31. You do that, or whoever, Cindy or somebody does that and says, this is the, it's going to follow naturally from it.
The issue, David, is just so that you understand, if you get questions about it, people say, well, if you're considering one 30 and a half, why does the ordinance say 31? And the issue is, it would be changed if that one were adopted. Or it would be 131 if it were the other one.
Wouldn't they be back to back? I'm looking at this sheet and it shows them, one being number one and I'm bringing number four. Wouldn't they both be like one and two, so they'd be basically taken together?
That's probably right. Wouldn't, wouldn't four move to two?
Well, I, I had the storm order first, just so we get that taken care of. Because if the utility's not created, that would, then we need to wrestle with the budgetary implications of how we're going to handle stormwater. That's why the order is as proposed. Your point's well taken. But I do think it's good to do your budget, do your stormwater, do your CIP, and then do the tax rate to affect all those things.
That makes sense. Otherwise, then you, we're, we would need to build in the stormwater into the tax base, or the tax rate, rather. So let's just stick with this order.
Okay.
Okay. And then the sewer rate ordinance, any, any other questions on that? And then the BB gun ordinance, I think we talked about during work session, so I think that was addressed. Easter seals, did the budget and finance committee? And then before we just begin having discussion about that, as I previously disclosed, I'd like to disclose that my daughter's on the waiting list for the CDC. And then I'm a member of a group of three or more people, including whose parents with children are at the Easter seals or with children on the waiting list, who will be affected by the Easter seals proposed project. Therefore, I can consider these matters fairly objectively and in the public interest. Spare, Mr. Callan?
Nope.
Or anything from the budget and finance committee?
Yeah, we, it was a fairly fruitless meeting. I thought that?
Was this with, I'm sorry, with bond counsel or with staff?
Bond counsel and staff.
Okay.
I asked basically what was in it for Easter seals. So they get a?
Quite a bit.
Yeah, they get a terrific tax break on the issue with their bond. Because I asked, well, why don't they just issue it themselves? Why do we have to go through the IRB? Well, there's a 100 basis point tax break for them if they use the EDA and the city as a conduit. And what we get in return is 10 basis?
Regarding repayment, should, for whatever reason, Easter seals not meet its bond obligations, what would we be subject to? And that was based on the CD, is it the community development areas?
CDAs.
CDAs. Experience of Richmond where the actual legal language, which was very clear that the city had no obligation, turned out that the investors really weren't interested in the legal, the legal interpretations. And just said to Richmond, you will pay anyway, or we will, it will affect your access to capital markets or your rates. So Richmond paid up. Just, now, there's apparently some difference between the CDA and the IRB. So I've asked council to ensure that there is a difference and that we will not be held accountable in any way, shape, manner, or form if there's a non-performance on the part of Easter seals and this bond. That's being checked out right now. I was told by Mr. Shields that we have a policy on the administrative fees and it can be no more than 10 basis points by policy. And that basically there, so I asked if we could do, maybe they'd be willing to do a voluntary contribution. And that was considered a bad idea because other enterprises interested in, in this IRB might be turned off by that. I don't, anyway, it's left as it is. I think we should review the policy. I don't think it's a particularly good deal for the city. That, that case hasn't been made. I like, you know, if you're going to look at what Fairfax and the others are doing, let's see how many they've done. There's a $14,000 a year tax abatement for five years that they'll be requesting. And in return, for the 100 basis point tax benefit and the $70,000 in tax abatements, the real estate tax abatements, during that same period, the EDA will get $25,000. And they get $72,000. So it seems to me the city is not getting a lot of leverage out of that activity. And I think it should be reviewed and see if it's even a wise idea to consider it anymore.
Policy itself, not necessarily this request?
Well, I've been basically told there's nothing we can do now. We can't get more money for the EDA.
In this interaction.
In this, in this interaction. The only thing we're checking at the moment is if there is some form of legal liability, not legal liability, a liability that has been established by the fact that the EDA is a part of the city. And therefore, in its relationship with the city, have we implied a guarantee, as was the case in Richmond, for the CDA, and that was $80 million, at which Richmond had to pay, even though they had legal documentation that said they didn't have to pay a penny.
Right, and we're going to get that by Monday?
Yes, so the, the legal counsel is just looking into the case as to what happened with the Broad Street CDA in Richmond. The point that was made at the, at the finance committee meeting is that an IRB is different than a CDA. And, but we'll, we'll get to the bottom of that. In terms of the IRB program, what it is, is a, is an instrument that is created under state law to allow nonprofits to take advantage of the tax-exempt status of local and state municipal bonds. And so we have a policy, like everybody in the region has a policy, as to how we administer those. Our policy is that we, we charge a fee of 10 basis points, 1/10th of 1% of the outstanding principal. And, and so as we had the discussion of the budget and finance committee, I was of the view that, given the fact that we followed that policy and we did all the paperwork associated with it and the EDA has approved it on that basis, and given the fact that if we change the basis points, you know, what we're talking about is $5,000 a year for the EDA. And if you change it, it would be of marginal benefit that it was not worth the effort to go back and try to renegotiate that fee at this point in the process. A lot of the context of this entire discussion is, is that this budget and finance committee really should have been organized a month ago. And, and I take responsibility for that. I think a lot of this discussion would have gone better had that happened. I think the committee felt that they were kind of behind the, the eight ball on the timing of it. And I think that is regrettable.
So it sounds like there's one outstanding item that we just need to lock down before we take the vote on Monday on this. So we'll get staff report on that. And then the follow-up is, is the policy in line with what we should be doing? So perhaps the budget and finance committee want to take that up, working with the EDA? Because I think the EDA would have clear equities there, too.
Okay, the, I misspoke. It's, I misspoke, it's less than $25,000 for the EDA over the next five years. And it declines.
Right, well, it's worth looking at, because in, in other jurisdictions, quite often, even when it's a nonprofit who's not paying property tax, they do a contribution in lieu of taxes to make up for it. That's, that's fairly standard. So it would be interesting to benchmark, and maybe it's a Virginia thing versus the rest, I, I don't know. So that would, that would certainly be worth looking at.
Might be worth.
Well, the, our bond, our bond counsel gave us the impression, he thought that a doubling of the fee was not out of the question for the CDC. I should also like to add that, you know, the word nonprofit, we're not talking the Galavicus Conservancy.
No, we're not.
You know, but we're talking the $2 billion operation. Easter seals, $2 billion. I don't know what it's CEO, it makes maybe a million bucks each of the many directors, probably, who knows, quarter a million, half a million. Who knows what they're making? Somebody's got to be picking up the tab. And I don't want it to be the citizens of Falls Church picking up the tab for that. That's my point. We've already picked up the tab for?
CDC for a long time.
CDC. This is, if this isn't a good deal for the city, I mean, really a good deal, then we shouldn't do it.
So it sounds like, again, we're waiting for one outstanding item about the city liabilities. Otherwise, we're ready to go. And then a revisiting of the policy, working with the EDA.
You don't have to remove the owner's name from the waiting list.
Well, that's, that's not an issue for me. It's many waiting unless she's on. All right. But I do think that there's good points being made, because I think we're going to see some of these requests come forward. So revisiting whether the policy makes sense and whether it's the right amount that the city's getting is worthwhile. So if we can add that to the budget and finance, and however, the EDA needs to be involved in that. We are on to the boundary adjustment resolution, which is also going to be on for closed session. So I believe that there's some changes to that that are coming up. Do we need a closed session on that, Wyatt, before we take that up on Monday?
It's possible we'll need to have that on the agenda just as a, as a stopgap. And I haven't talked with John Foster about where he is in terms of the changes that came out of the last discussion. But for those who are walking, you know, watching on television, I just want to clarify that this resolution is simply to refer the boundary adjustment agreement to the commissioner of local government. It's a step in the process. It's not, it's not the finalization of the agreement.
Ah, okay, so it's a very, it's not the agreement itself?
I, I just want to make sure that the, the public knows, this is just to refer it to the commissioner of local government. It's not to actually adopt the agreement per se. And so let me confirm that with John Foster. But I believe that's really the simple request that is of the council for, for Monday night.
All right, so that, and then we've got four proclamations that will follow as well. Okay, all right. Anything else, council members? Anything on the schedule or announcements, or what folks have been doing on the regional boards and bodies? Okay, if I can get a motion? All right, if I can get a motion to adjourn? If I can get a second? If I can get a second? It's Mr. Pepe on the first, I need a second.
Second motion.
Mr. Duncan on the second. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, it's a, we're adjourned.